It is 7:01 and I am going to call this McComb Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order. Uh, I think I got muted there for a moment. Uh, the time is 7:01. Uh, my name is Aaron Tuckfield and I'm calling this meeting to order. Uh, with that, I'm going to recite the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With that having been completed, I'm going to move on to the roll call. Um, as we have been doing, I'm going to uh, take care of the secretary role this evening, uh, because of our audio, uh, we finding, we've been finding it works a little bit smoother. So, uh, we're going to do the roll call then, and I'm going to say Mr. Piper first. Mr. Piper, you there? Mr. Piper?
I'm here.
Very good. Mr. DeCosta.
Present.
Ms. Lawson. Ms. Lawson. Looks like you're muted. There you are. Okay, Ms. Posey?
Oh, yeah.
Here.
Very good. All members are present and then, uh, we're just going to do briefly an introduction of the township employees, uh, contractors who are on the line. Uh, Mr. Assorti, are you there? Mr. Assorti still appears to not be there. Mr. Box, could you introduce yourself, uh, your position?
Yes, I am here. I am Josh Box, the planning director for McComb Township.
Very good. And then Mel, could you briefly, uh, can you, uh, state your name and, uh, your position with the township?
Um, hi, my name's Mel. I'm with the IT department.
Very good. All right. Uh, with that, we will move on to item number four, I approval of agenda items. Is there any discussion on the agenda, agenda items this evening? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve?
Uh, was that by Ms. Lawson?
Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't, uh, identify.
No problem. I, I wasn't sure if it was. So, motion by, but motion by Lawson is their support.
This member Piper, I'll support that.
Uh, motion by Lawson, support by Piper for the approval of the agenda items, and I will call the roll. Ms. Lawson.
Yeah.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Posey? Ms. Posey? Kristy, I think you still might be muted.
Yes, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Very good. Mr. DeCosta?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes, that motion passes unanimously. The agenda for this evening has been adopted. Next is item five, the approval of previous meeting minutes. Uh, these are for our meeting on September the third, 2020. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none.
Ms. Posey will make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes.
Very good. Uh, are those as read then? Can I, is that correct? Okay, very good. Uh, motion by Posey to approve the minutes as presented is their support.
Support by Lawson.
Uh, motion by Posey, supported by Lawson, and I will call the roll. Ms. Posey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawson?
Yeah.
Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta?
Yes.
That motion passes and the meeting minutes for September the third, 2020 have been adopted as presented. Uh, next, we have new business. Uh, these are the items before us this evening, um, which are, we haven't seen before. Most of these are zoning ordinance variance requests. Uh, we're going to take them one by one. Uh, and we're going to start with six A, which is a variance request from the zoning ordinance section 10.0354. The petitioner in this case is BSS McComb LLC petitioner, and the permanent parcel is 0819351102. Mr. Box, could you take us through this item and, uh, give us some background on it?
Sure. Thank you, uh, Chair Tuckfield. Uh, so, as you stated, this, uh, the petitioner BS, this McComb, that's beyond self-storage. Uh, they are located on the east side of Hayes Road between 22 mile and 23 mile, uh, in section 19 of the township. Uh, it is a self-storage facility. They are seeking a variance to allow, uh, some air conditioning units in the front yard when a rear yard is required for air conditioning units. Uh, development is already constructed and has been, um, for some time now. I'm not sure how long exactly, but since before I arrived at the township, uh, if you looked at the images, uh, in your packet, uh, you see the AC units that are in the front yard. Um, in discussions with both the engineering department and the building department, it seems that, uh, these were not shown on the original site plans, but were shown in some of the architectural plans, uh, that were given to the township after the engineering review. Uh, so it was, uh, built following the engineering plans and architectural plans, uh, somewhere along the line. Um, you know, it was overlooked, uh, in the, in the approval process, uh, whenever that took place, probably a couple of years ago at this point. That those were in the architectural plans and why they were allowed to be in the front yard in the first place. We have worked with the applicant, uh, and township staff, including the supervisor's office, um, to look at, uh, some possible solutions should a variance be granted to them, uh, and we have suggested possibly some vegetative screening, uh, to, uh, soften the look of these units being in the front yard along such a major roadway.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Box. Uh, before we go to the petitioner, I, I had a question for Mr. Assorti. Mr. Assorti, are you there, uh, at this point? And I believe Mr. Assorti is still not with us yet. Um, Mr. Box, you, you might be able to answer this question. I just wanted to verify. When, when it comes to, uh, a variance, um, and I believe we've talked about this in the past, um, we're not allowed to, um, I guess, uh, maybe the correct word would be, we're not allowed to penalize the petitioner for a, uh, something that's already been built when it shouldn't have been built at the point that we're looking at the variance. Is that correct? We're supposed to look at this as a request independent of, of when it was built and not taking into account the fact that it might have been built out of order?
I believe that is correct. Yes.
Okay, very good. I just want to make sure we're looking at this in the correct order. Obviously, there is procedural things that need to be followed, but that's not necessarily, um, our jurisdiction here. It's more to look for, um, whether or not the, the variance should be granted. So, um, very good. Uh, with that, uh, is there any questions for Mr. Box, uh, before we move on to the petitioner? Hearing none, I will move on to the petitioner. I believe, Mr. Gaber, you were in the audience on this item. Uh, if you could, please state your name and address for the record and give any comments you might have.
Yes, thank you, Chair, Chairman. Uh, my name again is John Gaber. I'm the attorney for the, the property owner and the developer. My address is 380 North Old Woodward, Birmingham, Michigan, 48009. Uh, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be in front of you this evening. As was alluded to, yeah, this was, this was kind of a rather unorthodox, I think, series of events that led us to where we are currently. As Mr. Box mentioned, the, uh, the mechanical condensers are out in the front. Um, there, there are two sets of condensers. Uh, one set services the offices that are right on the other side of the front wall where those, uh, those white condensers are. And then to the north, there are five condenser units that service the, the storage facility on the first, second, and third floors, uh, nearest to the front of the, of the building. And what happened was these were inadvertently omitted from the, from the site plan when it was submitted, apparently, and they went through, through township review, and they went through planning commission, and then they were approved. Um, and when the mechanical drawings were submitted, those had the, uh, these units on them, and those were reviewed by the townships reviewers and were approved. Um, a building permit was issued. Uh, they were constructed pursuant to the plans. Um, they were inspected and approved, and the applicant received a temporary certificate of occupancy. Um, this, this mistake, if you will, only came to light, uh, when we were, uh, pursuing our permanent certificate of occupancy, the final, uh, that this issue was reviewed and, and I think discovered by your planning consultant. So that brings us to where we are today and, uh, outlines the factual situation that, that got us here. Um, the, uh, the problem with, with the units being where they are and to potentially relocate them to the rear of the building is that it's, it's really not feasible. It would create a practical difficulty to do so. And that's because, you know, if you move these, these condensers to the rear, they're not going to be able to cool the areas that they're, they're meant to cool because they'll be too far away. The runs will be too long and such, and they, they just won't work. Um, so it, it would be really unduly burdensome on the operation of the, of the facility to move them, and that's why we're requesting the variance today. I know that my clients have met with, uh, with Mr. Box and staff and looked for some type of resolutions, and what we've done is, is pursuant to, to the agreement, um, with staff is we have planted arborvitae's out there. We had our landscaper, um, plant three sets of arborvitae's, uh, one set in front of the, the condensers adjacent to the office. One set in front of the five condensing units to the north, and then another set, um, kind of by where the sign is and where the, where the, uh, the gas line is. Uh, we planted those. I believe they're six feet high. Um, the reason that they're not, you know, they're not fully, uh, an opaque screen right now is because that's, that's where our landscaper recommended that they be planted because arborvitae's grow quickly, and so they're going to fill in quickly. And the issue is if we planted them any closer, uh, they would fill in too quickly, and then we'd have, we'd have dead, uh, portions of the arborvitae's pretty quickly. So, you know, that, that's why we believe there's a practical difficulty in the situation, and we're hopeful that the variance will be granted. Um, you know, we're certainly fine with the condition that this type of landscape, uh, buffer be, uh, be provided because we think that this is a benefit to the, to the public, uh, anyone who drives up and down Hayes Road to have the screening. Um, you know, as well as neighboring property owners in the area. So, we think it'll do substantial justice, uh, this resolution to, to both the property owner and to, um, others in the area. So that's why we would, uh, request, uh, this, this variance be granted this evening. And we're here to answer any questions. I don't know if JJ or Michael have anything to add to, to my comments, but, uh, that's kind of where we are and what brings us to this request today, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Gaber. Mr. Jenkins, did you have any comments that you wanted to add to this?
Uh, no, I, I think, uh, I think, uh, John covered everything, uh, there. While I am available to, uh, to answer any questions anybody might have, but I think, uh, we've covered everything. Thank you.
And, and just to verify, Mr. Jenkins, you're representing the mechanical contractor, is that correct?
I, I represent the owner beyond self-storage.
Okay, very good. Is the mechanical contractor here? Just, just to check. I thought there was a third person, but I didn't have it written down here as a note.
Uh, the other, the other person is our project manager, uh, who also works for us, not the mechanical company, Michael Johnson.
Very good. I appreciate that. Uh, uh, and thank you. Uh, is there any questions for the petitioner from the board?
Chairman Tuckfield, um, this is, um, Member Posey. I was, I was muted earlier when I wanted to ask a couple of questions, but I-
No problem. Go ahead.
Um, I would really like to just point out, and I'd like to, and maybe, um, Josh can help me with this, is, you know, when you read this, uh, variance request, and I understand the, uh, situation that the applicant is, but when you read it, it almost appears as if, um, there, it appears that it's the township's fault that this wasn't, um, caught earlier in the process. And I have trouble with that because I believe that it's the applicant's responsibility to ensure that this information is on the plans. And from what I understand, it wasn't originally on the plans when they were submitted. Um, so if Mr. Uh, Box could explain kind of the process, um, as to, and whose responsibility it is to ensure that this information, um, is submitted when it's supposed to be, and that even though permits are issued, it doesn't, um, necessarily mean that they are in complete compliance of the ordinance. It's the applicant's responsibility to be in compliance with the ordinance. So, I understand that we got, you know, pretty far along in the process, but if Mr. Box could chime in and explain it, um, it, it falls on the applicant, and I understand we're in a position now that we're, it's, it's been done and we're asking for forgiveness at this point. But if Mr. Box could explain the process, I think it would be clearer, a little more clearer as to how it works and whose responsibility is what.
And, and Mr. Box, you can go ahead in just a moment, but Ms. Posey, was just one thing I want to add to that, and, and obviously, we, we do see this in a, in a mode of asking forgiveness instead of permission, but I would say for better and for worse, for, for the petitioner's request, I think we have to look at the variance as a variance. You know, if, if these air conditioners were not installed already and we were asked for a variance, is there a practical difficulty? And I, I think at the moment, the applicant's asking for a practical difficulty essentially that they created is what I've been hearing so far. So I, I think it makes sense to go through and make sure that we have it on the record, whether or not, uh, it's the, the applicant's responsibility to make this, but I just want to make the point. Whether, um, the applicant had it on the plans or not, the fact that the air conditioners exist don't in and of itself by the, by the, the, uh, guidelines that we have to go by, doesn't necessarily justify a variance, uh, in our, in our deliberation. So just want to make that mention, but yeah, Mr. Box, if you go ahead and, uh, and, and answer, uh, Member Posey's comments on that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, I will do my best. So, uh, as I said before, I, I don't know exactly what happened in this situation as this happened, uh, this took place before I was here with the township. Uh, a typical process would be that, uh, a development would submit a preliminary site plan. We would take that to planning commission, uh, and get feedback. At that level, there is no, you know, recommendation for approval or approval of anything. It's simply, uh, feedback for what they will be looking when they come back with their final site plan. Uh, so the, the next step, as you can imagine, is bringing in that final site plan, uh, and that is where we would typically look for things like this, uh, where they're located, make sure they're in a spot that meets ordinance and code. Um, there have been a few occasions where they're not specifically, you know, mechanical, uh, units like this are not specifically shown on plans, uh, in, in terms of a site plan, and often that's because they're on the roofs, uh, of buildings. Several, uh, industrial or commercial buildings, uh, would put these type of units on the roof. Not all, but some do that. Um, following the, the final plan, uh, once that is approved, then they work with their, with our Department of Engineering for their final engineering plans, uh, and following that, then they move towards construction and work with the building department where they submit the mechanical and architectural and other, uh, more detailed, uh, designs, uh, which is when that was the stage in the process where, uh, these items, to my understanding, uh, that's when they started to show up on the plans.
Chairman Tuckfield, I, can I ask a question of the petitioner at this point?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Um, I, my question would be, is there a specific, I mean, as, um, our planner, Mr. Box, mentioned that typically with this type of, um, structure, the units would have been placed on the roof. Is there a reason why they weren't?
Uh, this is JJ. I can, I'll answer that. Uh, I, I think what he was saying is, is that that is a, a location that they can be. For, for our projects, uh, we do not typically show, show them on the roof. We, uh, we do put them around the exterior of the building, uh, in close proximity to, uh, you know, the areas that they feed. Uh, we, we actually try to avoid, uh, roof equipment, uh, eliminating, um, unnecessary, uh, cuts into the roof that could be leak issues and that kind of thing. So, this is typical for our design, and so, uh, where that, you know, it's, it's a piece of the mechanical equipment. So where it typically shows up on plans, uh, is on the, uh, mechanical and engineering plans which were submitted. Um, it's just that they were not shown on the initial site plan. So, you know, when we put them through on the plans, uh, we, we showed them where we normally do. Uh, we didn't realize that, uh, they should have been also shown on the, the site plan. Uh, you've been talking about whose fault it is, and, uh, we can certainly take the blame. Uh, you know, the, the reality is, is that, uh, you know, they were on our mechanical plans, uh, that were reviewed and either through the site plan review or the mechanical plan review, uh, no comments, whoever brought to our attention that, uh, that was an issue. I understand you can, you can say, hey, that, that's on us, but that, that's the reality of, of why it was missed. Uh, we had them on the plans and received permits and, uh, and, you know, to our knowledge, we're in compliance, and, and although we missed that requirement, uh, that's why, uh, that was built that way. As far as, uh, the discussion, uh, as to, uh, taking this into account, as though the building isn't built, uh, even though it is, uh, what I would say is that, uh, you know, if we want to treat this as though the building hasn't been built and we're asking for a variance, uh, ahead of that, uh, you know, I would say that, hey, we would like to, uh, put these, uh, condenser units in the locations that they are, uh, so that they can, uh, efficiently serve, uh, the areas of the building, uh, that they're designed to serve, and that, uh, in order to do that, uh, we would be open to some additional landscape requirements that would then buffer, uh, the side of them, but still allow, uh, the building to be, uh, cooled, uh, efficiently with, uh, the mechanical equipment.
Member Tuckfield, if I may?
Go ahead.
Mr. Jenkins, I appreciate your honesty, uh, with taking the, you know, accepting the, the fault in, you know, maybe not realizing, uh, all that information needs to be included because the way the letter is written, it didn't appear that way, and it almost appeared as if it was, you know, the township's fault for not catching it. But from what I understood, when I consulted, um, our inspectors and our planning department, um, it wouldn't really technically get, um, detected until the inspection, which is when it was, and we've realized that they're, you know, they weren't, they weren't in compliance with the zoning ordinance. So I do appreciate you indicating that and, um, you know, in your, uh, solutions that you're providing to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Uh, hearing none, I have a couple. Um, one thing I just, um, comment on, on one portion of the, the building permit process and the, and the planning approval process. Not speaking to this item, um, specifically, but I would hope that anyone who's submitting a site plan to the township would include, um, well, things that are typically needed on the site plan, and I would think that air conditioners would be one of them. So regardless of whether it's usually approved in, in someone's mind at, at the mechanical stage, this would certainly seem to be an element of a site plan as a member of the planning commission that I would, I would typically expect to see as a matter of course. It's, it's an element of the site plan. So, uh, not speaking to this item specifically, um, but just as a general comment, uh, hopefully site plans are actually representative of the sites that they are pertaining, they are, they are showing that they are going to be, uh, built for. So, uh, that's just a general comment and, and I guess keep that in mind for any future site plans you might, uh, submit for this particular site. Um, with regards to something a little bit more specific, um, you mentioned the efficiency, uh, or the, the usability of these, uh, of these units and, and relative to different portions of the building. I, I guess I can see that a little bit with the end units that maybe the, the, uh, the line sets maybe would go further to go into the building. But what I'm confused about is why that applies to the front units instead of putting them in the back. Why, why is in the front, um, any less efficient for those four units than putting them directly opposite on the back wall? If you could, if you could, uh, shed a little light on that, Mr. Jenkins, or, or, um, uh, Michael, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, yeah, so this, Michael Johnston with the North Point Development, um, just, uh, I guess, address that specifically. So there are two type of, two types of condensing units in the front of the building. Um, I, I believe you were provided pictures, but, uh, off to the right side of the front door, you're going to see two small, smaller white units. Um, those are part of what we, we call a mini split system.
Yep.
Um, if you've ever seen like the, the Mitsubishi wall units, a lot of people, they're small white units that, that are wall mounted.
Really with them.
The office area is fed with, um, two of those units. Uh, those, those units have very small distances that they can be from their condensers. So, uh, specifically for the, the two white condensing units in the front, um, they need to be in close proximity to that office, just given the nature of the, the unit itself. They, they're, they're impractical much past, uh, that short distance. Um, the remainder of the condensing units, uh, feed furnaces that are located on the first, second, and third floor at the front of the building. So our typical building layouts, um, if you kind of think of it like a box, there's, there's typically one unit in each corner. So two towards the front of the building and two towards the rear of the building. Condensing units on the side and rear of the building are for the units in the back. The units on the front of the building are for the units in the front. So to go, you lose efficiency both vertically and horizontal. So to climb to a unit on the third floor, for instance, and then have to come clear across the building, that's where you, you lose more of those efficiencies. So we typically try to keep those condensing units close to the side of the building that they are on. And we, we have had our mechanical contractor look at this, and the distances just get too great, uh, for the line sets to reach on those upper floors if the condensers are not in the front.
So the, the units on the, on the southeast and northeast corner, where, where are the, where are the cabinets that those are going to?
Those are on the, uh, southeast and northeast corners respectively on the, the first, second, and third floors.
So, and, and I don't mean to press you too much, but in theory, those could go on the east side of the building and be relatively equal distance to their perspective endpoints.
Um, in, in theory, yes, they, they probably, um, could have been. Um, at, at this point, the impracticality becomes, um, redoing those within the building. Um, a lot of the line sets run through wall cavities and, and things that would be impractical to, you know, remove paneling, remove drywall, et cetera, to, to relocate those units. Um, so, being that they are installed, uh, that's where the impracticality comes in moving them.
Yeah, so though I, as I, as I mentioned before, for, for both the good and the bad, typically with a practical difficulty, that, the, the, the question is not, if, if, if it becomes a self-imposed practical difficulty, that's not generally allowable. The question to us is there something unique to this property that, that's, uh, that necessitates this type of an action is typically how, uh, we are supposed to look at this, uh, unless I'm wrong, and if, if Mr. Assorti's here, you can certainly correct me on that. Uh, but that, that's typically how we're, we're supposed to look at them. Is there any other members of the board that would like to answer questions of the petitioner on this item? Hearing none, I'm going to take this to the public. Uh, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? If you do, please raise your hand digitally. If you're on the app, there's a, a button on the far left corner, um, if you're on your computer. If you're on the phone, please, uh, hit star nine, and that will raise your hand and we'll be able to, uh, unmute you so you can add a comment on this. I'm going to give, uh, about a minute here, uh, for people to, uh, to raise their hand if they wish to speak, um, and we'll unmute you if you do, and we'll move on if, uh, nobody raises their hand. All right, we've gone about a minute, and I do not see, uh, any members of the audience raising their hands, so I'm going to close the public portion and bring it back to the board. Are there any, uh, final questions or comments on this, on this issue for the petitioner or Mr. Box or Mr. Assorti?
Hi, Aaron. This is, uh, Member Piper. I just want to make sure I understand the reason for those, uh, five units that are like in the corner there on the, uh, west side of the building there to the left of the entrance. Uh, is that because supposedly the heating and cooling units inside are in close proximity? That's, that's, uh, the reason why they want the variance? Because to, to move it to the back would make it inefficient?
That is correct. Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Johnston. And, and actually, Mr. Johnston, just as a follow-up to that, uh, you said that they were on the corner, so obviously this building is a slight L shape. Is that going to the, are those cabinets in the interior corner on the front face, the ones that the, uh, the, the, the units to the left of the drive-through are going to?
Um, roughly, yes. It, it, it's a little harder to explain the, the way the corridors jog a little bit, but roughly, yes, that is the, the way this layout.
And, um, just so I know, because I couldn't see this from the parapet, but I, I've got a satellite up in front of me. It looks like there's some type of doghouse, uh, up in the center. What, what's the structure on the roof of this, uh, facility?
Uh, the roof of the facility is a, um, a, a metal roof. Uh, so it's a, a tongue and groove metal roof.
But the physical, I mean, I'm looking at a satellite, so I, I could be mistaking something, but there looks like there's a, 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 a structure, uh, roughly over the office area.
Um.
That might be the canopy that you're picking up that's right above the door. Thank you, Chair.
I, I, it's the same color as the roof. I, I think it's- I, I think it's made out of roof material. It looks like I, I, it may just be the doghouse to, to let somebody up onto the roof, but I'm just trying to figure out what it is.
I'm pulling up the vertical or the aerial right now, just to kind of double check for you.
I haven't seen it when I've ever gone past it. I'm just, I'm noticing it as I'm, as I'm, as I'm looking at the site here.
Uh, yeah, the, the only real doghouse that you're going to see is the top of the elevator shaft and then you're going to see crosshatching to be.
Yep, yep. Okay, very good. That makes sense.
Yeah, Mr. Tuckfield, I was going to point out too, in your packet, there is a kind of an oblique aerial shot of the building that you can kind of see exactly where it is. I see what you're talking about. If you look at that picture, you can see.
Yep, yep, yep. I see it. And there was also drawings with the, with the, with the air conditioning, the HVAC stuff, but I, I will, will say that I was having a little bit of a difficult time reading it. So I appreciate the help on identifying where these were. All right, very good. Is there any comments or motions?
Chairman Tuckfield, um, with the recommendation from the planner. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the request variance conditioned on installation of the landscape, landscape screening as described in the report.
Member, motion by member Posey, is there support?
Support by Slosson.
Support by Slosson. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Member Posey.
Yes.
I'm going to switch midstream here. Ms. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. DeCoster.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. That motion passes five to nothing. And the variance is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. With that, we are going to move on to item six B. This is a variance request from the zoning ordinance two zero dash five A two A. Permanent parcel zero eight two 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 five two zero one three. The petitioner is Edinburgh Estates. I know when I called earlier, there was no one here for this item, but before I get too far into it, I just want to verify, is there a petitioner present for this item? If you're in the audience, please raise your hand digitally or if you can unmute yourself and speak if you're in the attend or in the panelist list.
Yes, Brian Duque from Sinorama.
Very good, Brian. I just wanted to make sure I had you written down here. Okay, with that being said, Mr. Box, could you take us through this issue, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Edinburgh Estates is seeking a variance to place some updated signage on its entrance along Murray Drive, which is along three mile. The ordinance requires signage to be 10 feet from the right of way of 23 mile and 15 feet. From Murray Drive. However, a couple of things here. The Macomb County Road Department no longer allows signage to be in the median of roadways. And a number of, of developments within the township have their entrance sign in the median. If they were built prior to them changing the rule, they're fine. But if they are updating the signage or putting newer signage out, they can't, they can no longer put it in a public roadway right away in the median. So with that, they, they're obligated to now move the signs out to the outside of, of the right of way. In addition to that, since this development was built, 23 mile has been widened, which complicated the matter a little bit. With regards to where the signs could go, there's a number of, of existing landscaping and, and some mature trees in the area. And therefore they're seeking a variance to. Place them a little bit closer to the right of way than what our ordinance currently allows. As outlined by Mr. Skurdo in, in his report that should be in your packet. There are certain conditions that our ordinance requires for, for the justification of a variance. And he outlined those and, and came to the conclusion, and I would support that, that a, a variance, we would recommend a variance. And I will also say that we have worked with Edinburgh when they've gone out to the site and looked at the locations. And for that matter, item six D that you'll have on the agenda later tonight, this is almost an identical situation. It's a roadway, only a couple of streets down, looking to update some signage as well. We have worked with them, found the ideal locations outside of clear zones and, and we would recommend approval.
Very good, Mr. Box. I appreciate it. Is there any question for Mr. Box from the board? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to the petitioner, I believe it's Mr. Ducat. If you could state your name and address for the record and give any comments on this you might have.
Brian Duque with Sinorama Clinton Township, three, six, eight, eight, six Harper Clinton Township, four, eight, zero, three, five. No, I think you pretty, no, you're welcome. I think you pretty much described the situation diligently. We've worked on this for a little over a year now, looking for resolutions. And if you see on the site plan we proposed, we showed where the sign requirement would be. It's on there as opposed to where it's proposed. And obviously we wouldn't be, be impeding on that residence yard in order to meet those setbacks. So I think we came up with a good resolution that we submitted and we've worked with planning consistently to come up with this option.
Very good. Thank you very much. Is there any questions for the petitioner from the board?
Just one quick question. This is member Piper. Is my understanding that we had signs there before, but they were forced to take them down with the expansion of the road and that's what's caused this?
In this location, I do not believe there were signs there previously. This, this is new signage. In the next item six D that we're going to talk about in a minute, I believe that one did have existing signage. But because it was in the median, it had to be moved. But regardless, the, the widening of 23 mile since this development was built. Kind of as Mr. Duque indicated. Caused problems with where the required setbacks would put these signs in, in actually the adjacent properties yard.
Yes, I did notice that when I inspected the property that, that those berms are very close to the yards. And I'm just, does the township have an ordinance that the subdivision's supposed to have a sign? Or is that just something most subdivisions want to identify?
We do not have an ordinance that requires them to have signage.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner from the board? Hearing none, I'm going to go to the public. It looks like we have a member of the public who's raising their hands. Mel, if you could unmute this individual so they can speak and the phone number ending with zero eight nine five, we're going to unmute you shortly and you should be able to go ahead and speak.
I've asked for them to unmute, but.
If, if you could, whoever's looking to comment, you're currently on, on mute, so you're going to have to, to look on your phone for the unmute button so that you can speak. We can do part of it from our end, but the, the second half's got to be from your end. So if you can look and see, oh, there you go. I think you just did it. Go ahead and state your name and address. There you are. State your name and address for the record and give any comments you might have.
Hi there, this is Sarah Florka, address five zero eight six seven Murray Drive. I'm the homeowner association president and working with Brian on this project. Just wanted to confirm this is a sign, it is not a replacement sign. This would be a new project. So I wanted to volunteer my time. If there's any other questions, I could be in this with assistance.
Very good. And thank you for being on the line. Is there any, any questions for the, for the resident who's speaking here? Hearing none, ma'am, if you can just hold on, we're, we're going to keep you able to speak if you unmute yourself, but I'm going to keep going to the public, see if there's anyone else from the public. And if you could just hang with us for a moment, we'll bring it back to the board and I'll keep you as a panelist until that point, just in case there's any additional questions for you. Is there any member, other members of the public who would wish to speak on this request? If you do, please raise your hand digitally by hitting star nine on your phone or the button on the app. Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the board and close the public portion. Are there any comments or questions on this request?
Hearing none, this is member DeCoster. I'll make a motion to approve the variance based on the zoning, the planning department's exception standards listed in the packet for approval.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. DeCoster. Motion by Mr. Coster. Is there any support?
This is member Piper.
I, I think I heard Mr. Piper first, so I'm going to go with him as the support. Motion by Mr. DeCoster, support by Mr. Piper, and I will call the roll, assuming there's no discussions. I should ask, is there any discussion on this motion? No discussion, we're going to go to the roll call. Mr. DeCoster.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Lawson.
Yes.
Ms. Posey.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you to both the petitioner and the, and the neighborhood resident. We appreciate your commitment to the community, trying to, to, to make it look better and to make it a home. We're glad you're here and hope you guys stay around. All right. Oh, and one question or one comment on this, Josh, and I think we'll talk about this a little later, that this might be something we need to forward out of the planning commission. It sounds like it might be a more systematic issue going forward. But we can talk about that in a little bit here. We're going to go on to item six C. This is two requests from the zoning ordinance. I believe one is essentially contingent upon the other, but the two requests are from section 10.0352 G2 and 10.0806G. This is for permanent parcel zero eight, three, five, three, zero, 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 four, two. I believe this is the correct pronunciation, but Unica Development is the petitioner. Mr. Box, could you take us through this, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. As you mentioned, Unica Development, also known as Four Seasons, is a senior center that is being proposed at this location. This property is located on the east side of Card Road, just north of Hall Road, which is section 35 of the township. If you look at your packet, you'll see the parcel is a bit difficult to develop. A drain that crosses the parcel on the northwest corner of the property. And as you'll see, I, I think they've done a good job of creating a footprint that works. However, by creating this footprint, it's causing their, their parking to be close to the property line, which then requires a 25 foot green belt setback from the property line. They're seeking a variance to allow for them to build a six foot masonry wall in lieu of the 25 foot green belt. The wall would still provide between parking and the wall, there would still be an eight foot green belt, I believe. But this would be in lieu of the 25 foot green belt that's required by our ordinance. Due to the difficult parcel layout, we are in favor of this request and would recommend approval. I would also note that the property, property to the self, which was built a number of years ago. It looks like they were actually initially supposed to build a wall there and, and it appears that they would likely received a variance to not build a wall in the first place. So this is kind of filling in what would have been done a number of years ago. And then, as you mentioned as well, should this variance be granted, they are seeking what would be a second variance. Our ordinance requires for these masonry walls to be continuous walls. They would seek a second variance to provide a small two foot gap in the wall due to a utility pole located on the property line.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any questions for Mr. Box from, from the board?
This is member Piper. One quick question. Where is that utility pole? I did not see it when I was looking at the property.
On the south property line. I'm going to pull up the map here myself to make sure I've, I've got that correct. And I don't know if the.
I believe it's right next to the, right next to the sidewalk, Dave.
Okay, that's, that's why I was, I, I guess I misunderstood looking at the packet. I was thinking it was somewhere along like the eastern boundary and I just, everything was all vegetation. So.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a long, actually it's not right by the sidewalk. I just pulled up the, the street view. It's, it's along the southern boundary and that's where they're asking for the variance request. And I, I looked along the eastern boundary first as well, but this is, they're looking for the southern boundary.
Okay, thank you.
Actually. Make sure that my browser is clean. Would I, well, clean is actually the wrong term. Make sure that my browser doesn't have any non-township related items on it. I can share my screen briefly here and show. A picture of this for the board, which might be useful. Hang on here. Mel, I do have capacity to share my screen from this computer, I believe. Is that correct? I see a share a screen button, so I assume.
Yep, you should be able to.
Okay, hang on. Just have it, have it up. Dave, are you at a computer? Is that something you'll be able to see?
Yes, I'm at a computer.
Okay. All right, I believe my screen is shared now. Can you see it? Oh, not yet. Hang on. There it is. Now it should be shared. Okay, so this, this is the, this is the south line of the property and you can see the pole here right by the sidewalk. And then there's another pole over here. So I assume, and the petition will be up in a second, though he'll be referring to this pole right here. So. And I will stop sharing here. And with that, let's, unless there's any other questions from the board, I think we'll take it to the petitioner. Believe Mr. Laturco, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, is in the audience tonight. Sir, if you could unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record and give any comments you might have.
Hi, this is Bob Lynn. I'm with Urban Land Consultants and I'm here with Sam Laturco. He's the petitioner and.
Correct. And Mary Lynn, my, my apologies, I had that written down and I missed my cue. Go ahead, go ahead, sir.
But anyway, yes, this is, this is sort of like a, the second time. We had a plan approved about a year ago that didn't have some of these features that we put in here right now. One of the obstacles that we had to deal with was the fire department was not very happy how we were going to protect the building. We had to put a service drive in along the Clinton River side and it wasn't be able to hook up to the neighbor's property. So now we have a circulation around the entire building, similar building footprint, except it's got a couple of more stories to it. And we have parking underneath which we, before we had some parking spaces around the site. So I think this is a, a good solution to take care of. You know, the, the needs of the people that are going to live here. So if any questions, I can try to answer it, but that's our position. We'd like to get this plan approved so we can get it under construction in the spring.
Very good. I did have two questions for you. The first question is just to clarify what you're talking about. So, so originally your plan did not have the, the, the drive through in the parking on the south side of the building. It was only the drive on the north and on the east side of the building. Is that correct?
That is correct. So circulation of service vehicles, whatever, you would have to back up and turn around to get out. So that, this is a much better solution.
And in that, in that scenario, you were able to, to provide that I believe what is the 50 foot green belt that the ordinance stipulates?
Yeah, the old plan had a green belt along the south property line because there was no, no parking there.
Right, understood. And then my second question, just because I, I, I don't remember having seen this at the planning commission. Mr. Box, is, is this particular parcel governed under a consent? Is that, is that accurate?
I believe it is.
Okay, and, and Mr. Assorti, I, I don't know if you're there, but do you know what the consent covered? I think Mr. Assorti is still not with us. His, his name shows here, but I'm, he's not, not been answering. Mr. Box, do, do you know by any chance was the, was the consent just on the land use for the property? Or was there anything related to the, related to the site plan?
Off the top of my head, I do not know the answer to that and I'm actually trying to pull that up quickly as we're talking here. I don't know if the developer might have an answer to that.
Yeah, to the, to the petitioner, you might, you might be able to answer the same question. Was, was the, was this a consent? I believe it was. And if it was, what was it governing? Was it, was it the land use only or was there more portions of, of the site plan that it was, that it was spoke to?
It was a consent judgment and I believe it was just for the zoning for housing for older persons.
Okay, so and I assume that was part of what allows it, I, I believe the zoning for older persons allows it to go above three stories.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, very good. That was all the questions I had. Okay, very good, that was all the questions I had, any other questions for the petitioners from the board?
Chairman Tuckfield, this is member Posey, I would just wanna suggest maybe to the host to unmute Mr. Assorti. Maybe he's having difficulty unmuting himself, because I see that he is muted.
Yeah.
That.
Mel, can you do that, if, if that's possible?
What name is he currently under?
Tom Assorti.
Oh, sorry, I've asked him to unmute.
Okay, so you, you are not able to unmute him past the point that he is?
Uh, no, I can allow him to talk and I can ask him to unmute himself, but I can't do it from his end.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure that I have my cellphone, is it possible, Christie? Do you have a cellphone, can you text him and see if he's having technical difficulties?
I did, I haven't gotten a response.
Okay, so at, at the moment, we're just, it seems like he's just not there, okay. Okay, very good, we will, we will proceed, any other questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, I will take this to the public, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this issue? If you do, please raise your hand digitally by hitting star nine in your phone, or hitting the raise your hand button on the app. And I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand, so I'm going to close the public portion and bring it back to the board. Is there any comments or questions on this before I go to motions? Hearing none, I have one comment that I'd like to make before this, and that is that I, I find this compelling for a couple of reasons. One, it's an unusual property, unusual property is the classic reason for a variance. In fact, I believe the classic reason for a variance usually refers to water running through the parcel, and this does, which makes it difficult. It sounds as if the petitioner was attempting to abide by the ordinance and some other safety concerns that the fire department had made this, this portion be necessary. And then lastly, that typically these barriers separate residential for commercial. It's primarily for the concern for the residential, and that it is the residential portion of this joint juncture that's asking for the lessening of the, of the restriction. So I find myself in, in, in favor of it for those reasons, and I just wanted to state those on the, on the record before we went to any motions. With that, I would bring forth, I would ask for any motions on this item that anyone might have.
Member Piper, I will make the motion to grant this variance based on the planner's recommendation, and I agree with the statements that you just made as well.
Motion by Mr. Piper, is there any support?
Support by Slauson.
Support by Slauson, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I will call the roll, member Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Lawson.
Yes.
Ms. Posey.
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta.
Yes.
Tuckfield votes yes, that variance is approved, thank you to the petitioners, we appreciate it, looks like it's a quality development and I wish you well, look forward to seeing it, if we see it at the planning commission shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help, okay.
Thank you. And that takes us to item six E, this is a variance request, oh. We actually needed to do one more variance request there. I'm, I'm following on, are, are the petitioners still on the line?
Yes, we are.
I believe you are, I, I almost moved on, but I went back to my agenda and caught myself, I believe there is the necessity for a secondary variance on this. Mr. Box, or, or the necessity for a second request, once we have granted the first variance. Mr. Box, could you briefly just describe this secondary variance for us again?
Yeah, so the, the ordinance requires that when masonry walls are built there to be continuous walls. And they are seeking a small break in the wall, a two-foot gap in the wall, if you will. For utility pole that is on the property line.
Very good, is there any questions for the petitioner on this?
Yeah, I have, I have one, this is member DeCosta. Have you guys spoken to Detroit Edison or whoever owns that utility pole in the past, with just having it moved over two to three feet?
We have discussed some of it with them, and they would need to do underground borings and put pedestals and so forth up in place of that. Which we would then bear the cost of.
Surfacesing. Is there current underground utilities in that area now? If so, how do you intend to construct a new wall?
No, there's not current underground utilities, and that pole services the building next door.
Transformers right outside of it. There's transformers.
Are you under the impression with Detroit Edison that they cannot simply drive a pole next to it and transfer utilities in the overhead?
Detroit Edison does not have an issue with it, it's the AT&T and wow.
Dave, I just pulled up a picture of it, just so you have it as a screen share here.
Detroit Edison is not using the pole.
They own the pole, do you know?
I believe they do.
Yeah, my, my only concern is we've had this in front of us before, and it seems to me with a new construction, it would be easy to have them come in and install a new pole a couple of feet over, transfer utilities. I don't know if this qualifies because it's a new pole, they have to go underground with some utilities. I'm not, I don't know if that would be the case, if it would just be easy to kind of move this pole over so we have, so we have the continuity in the wall and we can meet the ordinance.
There's only about three feet between the wall and the parking lot.
On the medical building.
And that, that services the medical building. The property to the south of us.
Yeah, it looks, I mean, it, from here, from the pictures, it looks like it could be moved to the south. But there isn't, you know, sizable green belt there.
I thought it was this pole down here.
That's the pole.
It's the pole further down.
Further back.
Right here?
Yes.
It's a hundred and fifty feet east of the road there. And that line goes across into the medical building, and then there's some transformers, et cetera, down on the ground in front of that below that pole that serves as a service line.
See the pole here, and you may have said this, I was pulling it up, where do the wires go to the east of this pole? Do they go underground or?
They terminate there, they used to serve the house, it was tore down, but then, then they go south into the medical building.
Got it, it's terminated because it's just feeding it, yeah.
So that's the medical building's feed. We haven't contacted the service planner to see how they're gonna service us, whether they're gonna use the same thing, but we'll, we'll have to go underground eventually. When, when we get our work done.
Do you know if the service feed to the medical building is overhead or underground?
It's overhead, there's overhead wires, I don't know what they are, I don't remember, because I haven't been out there in a while, with their overhead wires.
So can't, I don't necessarily see overhead wires here, maybe this picture is not clear enough, but I don't see them, I see a transformer down here.
They show up on our site plan.
I, I wonder if it's, I, I, I believe that we have this if Mr. Box is, if I remember my conversation, this is coming before the planning commission shortly. I wonder if this is something that would be appropriate to postpone to a future planning committee or future ZBA to see if there's any ability to have a prognosis on if this is able to be buried or as part of the as part of the, the, the building portion of the facility, Mr. Box, do you have any, any comments on that, any thoughts, do you have a preference where we go with this?
I guess that's, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to postponing it, but typically, we like to get the
Variance is resolved prior.
First, because then you'd be approving site plans contingent on a variance, and we, we end up coming back here and, and kind of going in circles. And they are already on the agenda for, I believe. For the next, yeah, planning commission meeting, and I will also say, I, I don't, I agree, I don't see the overhead lines in, in this image. So they may or may not be there, but the, the question about moving the pole slightly to the south. I don't think that's a, I, I don't think that's feasible, because as they indicated three feet between that pole and the parking lot, and you need a couple of feet overhang for the vehicles in that parking lot.
Okay, any other questions from the board on this issue? Hearing none, I'm going to take it to the public, is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? If you do, please raise your hand digitally by hitting star nine on your phone or the hand button on your app. I'm not seeing any, so I'm gonna bring it back to the board for any further comments or questions. Hearing none, I do have a question for the petitioner, obviously, you're looking at the break in a wall here. Do you have any, any thoughts on anything you can do around that break in the wall to, to, to cushion that gap? Anything in the nature of an Arborvit E screen or something of that nature that would, that would help with that? Maybe not to the extent of a green belt, but, but something to dull that hole?
We wouldn't be opposed to it.
We, we could plant a couple of ArborVites on each side of it, yeah. Yeah, so that would give you a continuous barrier then.
If, if, if during the strata, section of construction, you're able to, or you find that you're burying the wires for your development. Would you be opposed to closing that hole if the pole no longer becomes necessary?
Yeah, I guess. We'll work with Edison, but we haven't been able to get a hold of Edison with this.
Okay, and, so, so if, if, and, and, and Mr. Assorti, if you're here, I don't wanna, I don't wanna stray on the side of putting conditions on that I shouldn't. Mr. Assorti, I'm just, I know I've been calling for him, but I've had a couple of questions and he hasn't been here, just wanna check and see, Mr. Assorti, are you available now?
Yeah, no, I'm here, I had a bad connection for some reason, I wasn't able to unmute.
Okay, very good, I just, I, I wanna ask them a question on this item, I don't know if you've been able to follow along, but I don't wanna stray over the I don't wanna stray over the line of asking for something I shouldn't, I, I had a question for him, am I okay if I ask about conditions on this variance?
Well, I think that, once again, you could, you could certainly recommend what you would be in favor of or what you would be okay with. And then, as long as the applicant amends their request to you to include those things, I think you're good with them.
Okay, so my, my, my recommendation to the applicant would be that they would plant ArborVites by the gap in the wall, and then a secondary, a secondary statement that if at, at some point, the pole no longer becomes applicable or is no longer there that they will close the hole in the wall with masonry so that it matches back up and does not leave a gap. Is that, is that something you're acceptable to as part of your application?
Yes.
No objections, no problem.
Alright, very good, I'll bring that back to the board, is there any comments or motions on this issue? Well, hearing none, I'm gonna make a motion, because I can make a motion, I don't do it very often as chair. But I'm gonna make a motion to approve this variance, the reasoning being, the practical difficulty being that it's a difficult parcel with, with water issues. That the petitioner is trying to do the best they can with regards to public safety. And with that, it's requiring a wall, and with the wall, there's a pole there. And so this variance would be to promote public safety on the lot, and also taking into account that the petitioner has, has said that they would plant ArborVites nearby to help with screening and to fill in the hole if at such time the pole no longer became necessary.
That's correct.
And that would be my motion, is there any support?
Support by Slauson.
Support by Slauson, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'm going to call the roll, Mr. Tuckfield votes yes, Ms. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. DeCosta.
No.
Mr. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Posey.
Yes.
That motion passes four to one, that variance has been approved, thank you for coming in, and I hope everything goes well and hope to see the presentation on Monday.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I think we are done with that item this time, I was jumping onto that item a little quickly before. Next, we have item six E, this is a variance from the zoning ordinance, section one zero point zero three one one EF three.
Mr. Tuckfield, you skipped six D.
Did I skip sixty, wow, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to get to the end of this agenda tonight, apparently. Item number six D is next, it is a variance request from ten point zero three four five three A, permanent parcel zero eight two two one zero one zero zero one and zero eight two two one three zero 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 five, signs and more as petitioner. And I will hand this over to Mr. Box to give any comments on this you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield, this is very similar to the one we just discussed in item six B. Buckingham Village and Signs and More, we have been working with them to locate some signage along Breddenbury Drive, this is on the south side of Twenty-three Mile. The ordinance requires the signage be ten feet from Twenty-three, Twenty-three Mile right away and fifteen feet from Breddenbury Drive. Again, Twenty-three Mile has been widened since this was developed, they have an existing sign, I believe, in the boulevard. This, that they cannot replace in kind due to the county road department's change in what they allow. Again, the, the previous one, we have worked with them, found some ideal locations. As outlined in, in Mr. Skirdo's report, they meet all the, the conditions that would justify such a variance. And we would be in, in, and in support of recommending approval for these variances. They are located outside of any of the clear zone areas, and we do think that they would provide an enhanced look for the development and for the, the context of the drivers along Twenty-three Mile.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Box, is there any questions for Mr. Box on this issue?
I did have with the one question, I think you answered it, are you saying that the current sign of the median cannot be rebuilt because of the, the county won't let them put it there?
So the county road department no longer allows signage in the median. That there is a, a possibility to replace in kind, but the, the way to replace in kind would simply be you have to use existing posts, and really, you're only, you're only allowed to change the sign face itself. The rest of the structure would have to remain the same, and, and they're opting to
Thank you.
To not use that structure, but use a new design and new structure.
Thank you very much.
Very good, any other questions for Mr. Box? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to the petitioner, is the petitioner in the audience?
Yes, I'm Molly Smith, and I am from Signs and More, representing Buckingham Village Two. And I just wanna make a mention that the, the sign in the median has since been hit by a car. And it's, it's no longer there.
Very good, and Molly, if I could, could you give your address for the record, please?
One three seven one Suter Drive, Troy, Michigan, four eight zero eight three.
Very good, thank you, did you have any other comments on, on this issue, Molly?
No, Josh did a perfect job.
Alright, very good, I appreciate it, any other questions for the petitioner from the board? Hearing none, I'm going to take it to the public, if the public has any questions on this issue please raise your hand digitally by hitting star nine or the hand button on the bottom left portion of the app. please raise your hand digitally by hitting star nine or the hand button on the bottom left portion of the app so that we know to unmute you and let you speak. Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public portion, bring it back to the board. Is there any comments, questions or motions?
This is member Piper. I'll make a motion to approve this variance.
This DeCosta, I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Piper, support by Mr. DeCosta. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I will call the roll. Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Coster?
Yes.
Ms. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Ms. Posey?
Yes.
That variance is approved and I appreciate your time coming into the petitioner and I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you.
No problem. All right. Now we will move on to item six E unless I haven't skipped another one. This would be, I'll say this over again, a request to vary from the ordinance, section one zero point zero three one one EF three. The permanent parcel number is zero eight zero five four two nine zero two two. And Carl and Ashley, and I'm not going to get the name right, but I'm going to give it a shot. Pagolio is the petitioner. Mr. Box, if you could walk us through this and give us an outline on this, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. I I also probably going to slaughter the last name here, the Pagolio, I think is how you say that.
If if we're going to slaughter, we might as well do it the same way.
The the residence is located at one eight five three seven Tiger in the Wolverine subdivision in section five of the township. North of twenty-five mile, west of Lockman. The lot, which is lot six in the development, has very much an irregular shape. It's kind of pie shaped with the lot narrowing as you go towards the rear of the lot. They are requesting a variance of five feet to allow a pool to be located five feet from the primary structure when ten feet is required. As you'll see in your packet, the shape of the property, as I mentioned, is very wide in the front and very narrow in the back. It's a very wide front yard and a large side yard based on where they located the house within the lot. But it creates for a very small and narrow rear yard, which is where the pool is required to be located. So due to the unique shape and size of the lot, we would recommend approval of the variance. Contingent on the applicant providing adequate screening of the pool. Being that it is also close to some of the neighboring yards and and I believe if you see Mr. Skirdo's view, he indicates that as well.
Very good, Mr. Box. All right. Any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Box?
This is member Piper again.
Go ahead, member Piper.
We've had, you know, similar situations like this and my only question, I always have concern about the safety with it being close to the houses. Long as it's not going to be a safety issue, I can definitely see the practical difficulty with the shape of the lot. With that five feet, is that still enough for to make sure, you know, a small child doesn't fall into a pool?
Yeah, so typically the the concern is is that the ten feet provides enough space between the door wall and the pool. The pool is actually kind of an L shape where the entrance is what the entrance is within five feet. Where the door wall is located is actually fifteen feet from where the pool would be. Although I, the way it was worded in their application, I'm not totally sure if if this is at the same elevation as the rest of the house. They refer to the the basement foundation. So this may be not even at the same elevation as the door wall to begin with.
And Mr. Mr. Box, I don't know if it's specifically why they mentioned it here. And I I've not seen the grade on this property. I haven't read through it, but it, one of the concerns that was a concern in the past which would require the the definition of where the basement was, was relative to water pressure on the basement. So it was common for people to to give grade and and distance relative to the basement wall. So I assume that's probably why it's put in there. Any other questions for Mr. Box from the board? Hearing none, I will take it to the petitioner. Is the petitioner in the audience? If you could, please state your name and record for the name and record. Name an address for the record and give any comments on this you might have. It looks like we have some hands raised. Mel, could you unmute Ashley, please? Ashley, we've on, oh, there you go. Are you there?
Yes.
Do you, Ashley, do you have, and we may have gone through this earlier, but I don't have it noted down. Do you have any other representatives who you want to make sure can speak with you at the same time that we need to unmute?
Oh, well, I thought Brian was going to be here. He said he was going to be here.
There, there is, there is another phone number. So Mel, could you, could you unmute the person ending with five zero as well? And and the cell phone number ending with five zero, we've we've unmuted you. Can you unmute yourself and identify yourself for the record?
Yeah. Yeah, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, this is a Brian Winston calling. I appreciate you letting me into the meeting late. I was at a funeral ceremony till seven twenty, so I appreciate that and hearing us at the end here. So I definitely appreciate that, working with us on the timeframe being last.
Not an, not an issue. Our condolences, and I had spoken to Mr. Maples earlier and he had indicated you might be late. So I actually, I had a note for that. I'm I'm glad you were able to make it. Um, Ashley, did, did, no problem. Did you, Ashley, did you want to give any comments or did you want Mr. Winston to give those?
I mean, he definitely can. I wasn't sure if he was there or not, but I just wanted to clarify that the portion of the pool that was going to be within five feet of our house is just, it's the tanning deck, quote unquote. So it's a very shallow area where we would be getting into the pool where it's just got a few inches of water where you can kind of sit and read a book or whatever. If obviously, safety is a concern of mine as well as I have two children, the rest of the pool, the deep end and even the shallow end, that's not the tanning deck. Be all far enough away from the house.
And and if I could, is is that portion of the pool, is that adjacent to the door wall or is the door wall on the opposite end of the house from there?
That would be to the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. You can answer.
Uh, that would be to the right of the of the door wall. The door wall is about a three step down door wall. So we left plenty of room for steps, plenty of room for walking in front of steps. As you can see from the drawing, we have close to fifteen feet there. The area to the right is going to be like off to the side. That's just the entrance way to the steps and it it can be entrance from the five foot side or it can be entrance from the fifteen foot side through through a shallow area like Ashley was talking about, a canyon there area. So we have multiple entrances in that area for safety. So it's just more formality that we had to wrap around the steps. And as the gentleman said earlier, it has a very unique shaped lot. So we have a very tight backyard. We already have shrunk the pool to a point of practicality and we just wrapped around, we left plenty of room around the steps. So that would be to the right, sir.
I appreciate Mr. Winston. Any other, any questions for the petitioner from petitioners from from the board? Hearing none, I'm going to open it to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this issue? If you do, please raise your hand digitally by hitting star nine or hitting the hand on the app so that we can unmute you so you can speak. Hearing none, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Is there any further comments or questions on this issue? Hearing no comments or questions, is there any motions?
Member Tuckfield?
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve for the requested variance contingent upon the applicant providing adequate screening of the pool.
Motion by Ms. Posey, is there support?
Support by Slosson?
Support by Ms. Lawson. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's no, or hearing there's no discussion, I'm going to bring it to a vote. And Ms. Posey?
Yes.
Ms. Lawson?
Yeah.
Mr. DeCosta?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Unanimous vote and that variance is approved. Thank you to the petitioner. We appreciate it. Thanks for investing in the township. We're glad to have you here and hopefully this goes in well and you get to get to enjoy your pool next year. All right. With that, we're going to move on to the next item, which is old business. Mr. Box, I don't believe we have any old business tonight, but is there anything that I should bring up here?
I think we do not have any old business.
Okay, very good. I will then move on to item eight. Item eight is public comments. These are comments that are not specifically related to items that we've heard tonight, but more to the ZBA at large. Is there any comments from the public this evening? If you wish to speak, please raise your hand by hitting star nine or hitting the hand button on your app. Seeing none, I'm going to move on to item nine, which is ZBA member comments. Are there any comments from the members this evening? I have one. I just wanted to thank Ms. Posey for running a successful election on Tuesday. It was a busy day. I I always enjoy working the elections, but Christie, I know it was a long day for you guys. I think you guys counted, I I know I saw the totals come in for the absentee ballot sometime around nine or nine or nine or ten in the morning. So I I assume you guys were working through the night. I appreciate all the time you guys spent. And it's good to see, good to see elections work smoothly. Obviously, they're kind of the base of our of our system here. And also, I want to thank all the the new members of the Board of Trustees who were elected. We have a lot of new faces. Hopefully, we'll be able to talk to them and kind of interface with them over the coming months. I look forward to seeing their enthusiasm and and people looking at things. It's always interesting to see people looking at things from a new perspective and and good to see how that works and how that's able to move us forward. So thanks, Ms. Posey, and and thank you to all the new members of the Board of Trustees. Looking forward to seeing you going forward.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other, any other comments from the members?
I was going to say something about Christie running the election as well. You know, I worked at precinct twenty and so I got to see firsthand. I thought everything went very smoothly considering the pandemic we're in and everything else. And I, it's like Christie pretty much thought of everything that every contingency and everything was planned for. It really did go very well.
Thank you very much for the nice comments. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. And thank you, Christie, again. With that, if there's no other comments, I'm going to move on to the planning director comments. Mr. Box, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, a couple. First, I would just like to echo the sentiments you guys have have been saying that, you know, I do not live in the township, but from all accounts, the the election ran well. I know it's a very crazy time of the year to begin with and then with the pandemic and and everything going on. It it seems to have gone very smoothly in our township. And and thanks to Clerk Posey for that, as well as it sounds like a number of our board members here assisted with that process. So thank you guys as well for giving back to the community. I know the residents definitely appreciate that. And then the other thing I wanted to touch on is we do have a a Board of Trustees meeting next week. And a couple of of the board members who have their terms expiring at the end of this year, you are on the agenda for reappointment to the ZBA. So congratulations on, you know, being on that agenda. We'll be, I'll be pulling for you to get approved by by the full board for reappointment.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Box. Appreciate it. And with that, I think that concludes the business for this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Lawson?
Motion by Sloss is their support.
Posey supports.
Very good. Then I will call the roll. Members Lawson?
Yeah.
Ms. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck, Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. DeCosta?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Piper votes yes. That is a unanimous vote and we stand adjourned at eight twenty-six PM. Thank you, everyone.